Call to order, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for August the 4th, 2025. At this time, we will ask Commissioner Josh Lael to lead us in our invocation and I will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Bow with me if you'd like, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this little snap of cool weather that you've blessed us with. Heavenly Father, thank you tonight for Alexander County, for all the wonderful folks that live here, and all the blessings that you continue to bestow on us here in Alexander County. Dear God, please place your hedge of protection around our EMS, our Sheriff's Department, our fire departments, and also our county employees. Dear God, those folks go out every day serving us, the citizens, and we ask that you, again, protect them as they leave their homes to serve us each day. Heavenly Father, be with us during this meeting, help us to make smart decisions that are beneficial to every citizen of the county. And again, thank you most of all for all our blessings. In name we pray. Amen.
If you would, please direct your attention to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, do we have any commissioner with a commissioner's report?
Mr. Chairman, I had the privilege of sitting in on a meeting July the 24th with extension. We had North Carolina State University, the dean, Gary Fox, was here and wanted to know what our extension was doing. Allison Brown and her team was there. I think it was a good meeting, wouldn't know how he could reach out and help us. I think he was really pleased when he found out our Kettleman Association here in Alexander County had raised enough money till they done five scholarships this year, and four of them was going to North Carolina State University. So I think Allison done a great job making her presentation for him, and he's said he had, we had an open door if there's anything we need him for. It could be of any service to Alexander County. So, thank you.
Good deal. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to relay some information. I'm not sure if everyone sees it, but from our senator in Raleigh, Eddie Sittle, and I thought, you know, you kind of read through stuff sometime and don't pay attention to it, but pretty big accomplishment. He says here, and this is from his email, "I felt it was only right to reiterate North Carolina's ranking as the number one state in the nation for business by CNBC. Prior to the last probably five or six years, North Carolina had a pretty bad rating because of money that was owed to the federal government. Now all that's taken care of, we've got an A-minus score in total education, and we rank sixth overall because of the statewide initiatives and from our own superintendent and a lot of others across the state, putting more incentive on CTE, dual enrollments, and all of those things." So, you know, North Carolina, you know, we're in pretty good shape. Sometimes we don't think about it, and I know I watched some of the news, but it seems like we're in the most cynical society that there's ever been. You can do 100 good things, but that one thing that you mess up on or is bad, that's what everybody hears about. But, you know, let's keep positive. Alexander County, we're doing good, and I'd just like to mention too, I guess everybody that came in saw the two ambulances out there. You know, we don't get them one at a time, we get two. But, I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good deal. I had the pleasure of attending the headnot Volunteer Fire Department Celebration of 75 Years. There was several out in the audience here this evening that I saw there as well. Is there anybody that currently is a volunteer down there that's here tonight? They put on a really good spread for their celebration, FYI. It was almost like a, you know, a county event, which I don't know how many people they had, but it was a lot. Anything from hot dogs, hamburgers, to ICs, they, you know, blow up. They even got, the kids even got to, you know, work the fire hose, which I thought that was pretty cool myself. So, any other commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a brief thing. This is obviously personal, or, this is obviously public information, but we receive information from the West People Council of Governments, basically quarterly. It's just kind of an economic update. And when I looked over, when I looked over the most recent one that I received in an email this past Thursday, there's a couple of things that stood out to me. Alexander County, we are, you know, we are part of the Hickory-Lenore-Morganton, what they call MSA, which is, but unemployment rate as of March 2025 in our area was 3.6%, which is pretty strong. I mean, you know, that's, that's not bad. That is fourth in the state of North Carolina, the lowest being Raleigh, then at 3.1 Durham Chapel Hill, 3.2 Pinehurst, Southern Pines at 3.3, and then, like I say, the Hickory-Lenore-Morganton, which includes Alexander County's, 3.6 is number four of the, you know, the 15 quote-unquote MSAs in the state of North Carolina. Another thing that I just wanted to share, per capita personal income, looking at Alexander County, comparing, you know, Alexander County to Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba, from 2020 to 2023, the per capita personal income for Alexander County has increased from $42,280 to $49,694. So, and just to let you know how that compares, the 2023 numbers, Alexander County's per capita is 49,694, Burke County's is 47,560, Caldwell County, 47,398, and then Catawba is higher at $57,000. But, I was, you know, I don't want to say surprised, but I was impressed that Alexander County's, you know, per capita personal income was, you know, $2,000 higher than Burke's and or Caldwell's, because we're often seen as a, you know, we're often seen as small and, you know, maybe not as important. But, just to show you, we're whipping, we're whipping some counties in certain areas, and I'm just, I'll say that I'm a numbers guy, and so statistics like this intrigue me. And I just want to say, basically, that the economic picture in Alexander County looks pretty good.
Thank you. One more statement from, on the commissioner's report is, we did as a county implement the job opening for a county manager effective today. So, that, that has been distributed out, and that process has started. So, just wanted to make you guys out here today aware. All right, moving on from commissioner's report, do we have a motion to approve adoption of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We got a second. Any discussions? If not, all in favor, say, raise your right hand. No, it's unanimous, sorry. At this time, we do have one individual that has, oh, no, wait a minute, I skipped one. We got a special recognition.
And is he here yet?
Okay. For Lieutenant Buddy McKinney, Alexander County Sheriff's Office, and, Commissioner Lael is going to read off a plaque.
Sure. Will McKinnney come with?
Yes, please.
McKinnney, if you would.
His wife's wedding.
Please, sir.
And I truly suggest your wife come with you.
We need you to be a tracker of possible cert.
It's a family affair.
I'm gonna read a brief, little statement bio, and I, first thing, I'm gonna call you Officer McKinnney, I'm not gonna call you Buddy, because I'm just not going to. Officer McKinnney was hired by the late Sheriff Hayden Bentley in July of 20 of 2005, and has since served with distinction in multiple roles, including detention officer, deputy sergeant, and ultimately lieutenant over SROs or school resource officers. Throughout his career, Buddy demonstrated unwavering commitment to justice, safety, and the values of our sheriff's office. In addition to his leadership on the force, Buddy has served as a detention and criminal justice instructor, playing a vital role in training the next generation of law enforcement professionals. The county commissioners would like to formally recognize and congratulate Lieutenant Buddy McKinney on his retirement effective July 2025, with nearly 20 years of dedicated service to our community. And I just want to say, from, obviously from the commission and personally, we appreciate you very much. Here is a little, little something from the county, and I'll read this. It says, "Key to the county, presented to Lieutenant Buddy McKinney, in appreciation of 20 years of dedicated service to the Alexander County Sheriff's Office, presented by the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, August 4th, 2025." Thanks, sir. Appreciate you. Now, we expect at least a five-minute, you know, five-minute speech.
I don't know if I can get five minutes. Thank you very much. It's been my honor, and a lot of people thank law enforcement for their service, and I want to do the opposite thing. I want to thank Alexander County for giving me the opportunity to serve. It's been truly my honor and my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Hey, you need to get the sheriff up here, too.
Yeah.
Don't ever miss Doc D.
Yeah.
I've seen a lot of cats since I caught him. I've seen one be on me since I caught him out.
I'm gonna stand on the other side.
Yeah.
Sure might feel like that.
Good decision.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, though.
At this time, we have another special recognition, and that will be Nancy K. Sharp. Nancy, are you available to come up to the podium? If you would make your way, and Commissioner Larry Yoder will be meeting you there.
I'm a little winky. I need part of the pain. Congratulations. Absolutely. I know there's a lot of people sitting up there, that guy over there on the end, I know he's tickled, because you and his mother were big, big friends for a couple of years, a couple of years. You know, a couple, two or three years. You know, this is an honor for me, because I do appreciate everything that you've done, and you guys have done a great job with our Board of Elections here in Alexander County. And I'm gonna read what it says here, but coming from me personally, I know the improvements that's been made at the Board of Elections, I know how involved you were with them, and what's really strange is I was just looking, it wasn't too much on there, you know, I both came out here and gotten all involved in all this stuff about the same time, you know, because I've been here about 20 years, and here you are, gone. So, you know, good deal. But let me tell you, Nancy, this is what it says. It says Nancy Sharp joined the Alexander County Board of Elections in 2005. Since that time, she has been involved in nine general elections, eight primaries, six primary runoffs, six municipal elections, and three special elections. She served as Board of Elections Chairperson from 2013 until 2018. Over the years, Ms. Sharp has navigated numerous changes in election laws, and has been involved in several significant changes, including opening the first satellite early voting location in Bethlehem. Early voting had previously been held in the Board of Elections lobby until 2014. Upgrading the tabulators in 2015, which was instrumental in preparing for the 2016 presidential election. Merging Election Day precincts from 16 to 10 in September 2015, which allowed the precincts to have more poll workers. Deploying the first laptops to Election Day sites in 2016. Eventually operating three early voting sites starting in 2016. She recently retired from the Board of Elections after 20 years of service. She holds the distinction of being the longest-serving member on any county Board of Elections in the state, regardless of party affiliation. The Alexander County Board of Commissioners would like to congratulate Nancy Sharp on her retirement from the Alexander County Board of Elections after 20 years of dedicated service, and I know it was dedicated. I've watched you over the years. So, on behalf of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to present this to you. It's a key to the county, presented, I like the way they did that, even written your name out, Nancy K. Sharp, in appreciation of 20 years of dedicated service to the Alexander County Board of Elections, presented by the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, August 4th, 2025. Nancy, thank you, and I know this board appreciates everything you've done, and I know the citizens of this county should appreciate everything you've done. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Let's step out. They won't get a picture.
Butch is here, get Butch in the picture.
Yeah.
Only if you smile. There you go. Good job.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, hold it. Yeah, get the whole board.
Hey, you've got, oh, I'm sorry. You guys are on the Board of Elections, and all served on the Board before all this time, and you come up here.
Ray's back there.
Now, come on up here with him. Come on, guys. And you guys.
I was going to acknowledge.
Okay. We're getting a picture with him. You good?
So, nothing to worry about. We're good.
I think I'm gonna.
I'm gonna close it.
Everybody, give it one.
Yeah. Make sure you see everybody's face.
Larry, you need to smile.
Yeah. Try three.
I've learned a lot, and I've worked with both sides. We never had an issue, and all the board members that I've served with, and I'm delighted that Ray and Twyla are here. Politics never entered when we walked in the door. It's been great, I've enjoyed it, and I'm proud of everything they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving into a public comment period. We had one individual to sign up as a Mr. Paul Kelly president. Public comment is closed. At this time, we will need to enter into public hearing 5310, Public Transportation Program Grant for FY27, given by David Moose, Consolidated Human Services Director. Do we have a motion to enter public hearing?
Make a motion to enter public hearing for 5310, Public Transportation Grant.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Moose, podium's yours.
I'll give a brief synopsis of the NCDOT 5310 Public Transportation Program Grant. The overarching goal of the program is to improve mobility for qualifying seniors and individuals with disabilities within Alexander County by removing barriers to transportation services and expanding transportation mobility options available to them. To give you an idea of the project cost, the total is $194,592 in grant funds, which are comprised of federal, state, and local shares. The federal share is $155,674, the state share represents $19,458, and the local share represents $19,460, which are sourced through a block grant awarded to Alexander County. The program provides transportation services to congregate mill program sites within Alexander County for Alexander County seniors who are age 65 or older, or who are under age 65 and are disabled, who would otherwise not be able to attend services due to a lack of transportation options. The program also provides qualifying adults and those with disabilities access to transportation options for services such as essential shopping, accessing medical care, attending adult daycare, participation in volunteer opportunities, accessing domestic violence services, and attending senior center programs, just to name a few. Transportation services are provided five days per week through an agreement with Greenway Transportation, and this is an annual recurring grant application that is administered through the Department of Social Services.
This is something we do every year, correct?
That is correct.
Have we already applied and got the $19,000 in the grant?
Yes, that's awarded through the Home and Community Care Block Grant, Title III Funds.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so anyone in attendance tonight can speak on this if they choose to do so. If you do, just raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. Any commissioners got any discussion?
It's a good thing.
Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thanks, sir. Do we have any discussion at all?
Do we need to make a motion?
All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve Federal Section 5310 Program Grant Application, as stated by Mr. Moose.
Got a first and a second.
That includes the resolution in your motion, is that correct?
Yes, and the resolution.
So, we've got a first and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Moving on, we've got Budget Ordnance Amendments Number 3 through 6, given by Deborah Bechtel, interim county manager. My apology. We've penciled in. At this time, we need Mr. Chris Hicks to come to the podium. This is our new fire marshal for Alexander County, and I think he's getting ready to introduce himself to everybody.
All right. My name's Chris Hicks. Just want to thank you, everybody, for giving me the opportunity to be the fire marshal here in the county. I look forward to working with the county departments and continuing to build a strong county and build relationships that keep the team growing.
You want to introduce your family who came with you?
I can. All right. So, with me tonight is my wife, Kayla, and my son Tanner, and my daughter, Taylor. They're very talkative, so can't get a word in edgewise.
Well, welcome to the county. We appreciate it.
Look forward to moving forward and building the relationships. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, now, at this time, let's see, we will do our Budget Ordnance Amendments Number 3 through 6, and Deborah will read those out.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I do do that, though, I just wanted to share with those of you here, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, of which, of course, all counties and Alexander included belongs, they initiated this past year something called Heroic Hands, and that was designed to honor significant contributions of county government employees. And I am very pleased to share that Alexander County's own finance manager, Jennifer Herman, who is seated in the back and had no idea I was going to be saying this, has been selected as one of the heroic hands and is going to be recognized at the NCACC Commissioner Conference in, later this month, on August 21st, in Greenville, North Carolina. So, we are very, very proud of her that she has been selected, and of course, that's due and recognized for all the hard work she's done always through the years, but particularly this year. So, thank you, Jennifer. And with that, we're gonna talk about budget. So, I have four budget amendments for you. Budget ordinance amendment 3 actually is all increases. We received a couple of different grants related to public health, one for infrastructure, local workforce development programming, and another for special supplemental nutrition program for women, infants, and children, other known, otherwise known as WIC. Budget ordinance amendment number 4 has a number of things in it, and includes a grant from Duke Energy Foundation to be used for the purchase of water rescue kits in emergency management, a grant from the North Carolina Amateur Sports, Youth Sports Grant Fund to the Recreation Department, which will be used to purchase youth sports equipment and do some facility upgrades, to increase the county parks budget department for the four-seasonal position at the Swim Beach and Rocky Face Park seasonal positions that are both there, and this will carry us through May and June of next year as well. And then to decrease a fund contingency in the senior center operations grant, it's just to correct a balance that was inadvertently put into the budget portion of it as revenue, and that was an in-kind contribution. Budget amendment ordinance number 5 is to adjust the general fund budget for updated allocations for the workers' compensation and property and liability insurance premiums, and this covers all departments, and of course, this is something that we're required to have. And then budget amendment ordinance number 6 is to budget for reclassification of a part-time pier sore port specialist position. We received a couple of different grants related to public health, one for infrastructure, local workforce development programming, and another for Special Supplemental Nutrition Program for women, infants, and children, other known, otherwise known as WIC. Uh, Budget Ordnance Amendment Number Four has a number of things in it, and includes, um, a grant from Duke Energy Foundation to be used for the purchase of water rescue kits in emergency management, uh, a grant from the North Carolina Amateur Sports, Youth Sports Grant Fund to the Recreation Department, which will be used to purchase youth sports equipment and do some facility upgrades, uh, to increase, uh, the county parks budget department for the four-seasonal position at the Swim Beach and Rocky Face Park seasonal, uh, positions that are both there, and this will carry us through May and June of next year as well. And then to, to decrease a fund contingency in the senior center operations grant, um, it's just to, to correct a balance that was inadvertently put into the budget portion of it as revenue, and that was an in-kind contribution. Uh, Budget Amendment Ordnance Number Five, uh, is to adjust the general fund budget for updated allocations for the workers' compensation and property and liability insurance premiums, and this covers all departments, and of course, this is something that we're required to have. And then Budget Amendment Ordnance Number Six, uh, is to budget for reclassification of a part-time peer support specialist position to a full-time peer support specialist, and then to add to part-time, no benefit, peer support specialist positions. And the funding for this comes from the 2526 Opioid Settlement Fund distributions made to Alexander County, and this reinforces the Port CP strategy adopted by you as a board on June 2nd earlier this year. And those are the budget amendments I have.
Is there any discussion? Most pleasure of the board.
Chairman, I maintain a motion to approve Budget Ordnance Amendments Number Three through Six as presented.
Second. First, say, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, uh, Deborah will also, uh, give us our consent agenda.
So as outlined in your packets, um, number of items on the consent agenda, a, a few tax abatements and adjustment, and some tax refunds for July. The regular minutes from the July 14th meeting. There are, uh, board committee appointments, one to the ABC Board, another to the I Care Board of Directors, uh, the line item transfer report for July 2025, uh, proposed revisions to the personnel policy. This is an updated unlawful harassment policy. Um, this correlates to training that has been going on throughout the county, which we'll be finishing up later this month. And then the final item is a request from our sheriff, Chad Pennell, and this relates to declaring a number of weapons surplus, the list being in your packet, and this has been, um, authorized for disposition through the Alexander County Court system.
Per our consent agenda, for...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. At this time, Ben Fockenberry, county attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Uh, and Commissioners. At this time, I ask for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, uh, Point 11, A, 3, and 6, in order to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, as well as to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of, of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee.
The motion?
No move.
Second. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
County Attorney Fockenberry, do you anticipate any public action following the closed session?
I do not anticipate any action after closed session.
Thank you.